It's seven o'clock and I'll call the Buchanan City Council to order. We have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, I have the pledge of the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our normal order of business is to welcome all the Westland students to city council meeting and have you stand up, take a look at the camera, and say your name, where you're from, and what your major is. I'd like to start.
Uh, I'm not a student.
You should get it from being late.
I know. I'm Megan Campbell. My major is criminal justice, I'm from Clovis, Ohio.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Tina Morcom, I'm a criminal justice major as well, and I'm from Randolph County.
Caitlin Brown, I'm a business management and psychology.
From where?
Bridgeport.
Hi, I'm JT Nolan, I'm a criminal justice major and I'm from Laurel, Maryland.
I'm Erin Keller, I'm an education math major and I'm from Peasterville, Pennsylvania.
Hi, I'm Sierra Davis, I'm also an education math major and I'm from Weston.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Birch, I'm an accounting major from Wheeling, Missouri.
Hi, I'm Brittany Williams, I'm an accounting major from Saint Mary's, Ohio.
My name's Cassie Curtis, I'm an education major and I'm from Ridetown.
Thank you very much. I hope you learn a little bit this evening and certainly welcome back anytime. Glad to have you. See how the local government operates and maybe you'll join in your hometowns as well. I don't see Guy Howard here, so we'll move on down the agenda. Michael?
Uh, Mr. Recorder, I'm going to defer to Jay Holland on subject matter. It's all right with you and the agenda. Otherwise I'll hear him like, "Gosh!" In the back the rest of the meeting, so I don't want to interfere. I hear that enough daily, so.
Well, he has to stay for exactly the same.
What's about him?
Probably be it for that.
So I'll yield to Jay for this. It's all right with you.
My presentation is really short tonight. Last Friday, we had the, last Friday afternoon, we had the opening for the streetlights and globes portion of the Gateway East project. We opened those up. There were five bidders. The apparent low bidder is Capital Tri-State from Cumberland, Maryland, with a bid of fifty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents for the forty-three light poles and globes. And I'm going to be recommending to the Consolidated Public Works Board next Thursday that we approve their bid and accept those and we start the ordering of those projects in anticipation of Jerry Arnold and the Street Department starting the concrete sidewalk portion of the project in early April. And that's all I have. Thanks, Mike.
Any questions for our junior engineer?
Did you get any bids out of West Virginia?
I ha- yes, I received one, two, three out of West Virginia.
And was there a big difference between them and the county?
Yes, yes.
How much, what was it?
Almost twenty.
Really?
Almost twenty. Seventy-three and seventy-two. Had to reject one for being non-compliant, they didn't include some of the documentation that was required, so we had to reject those. But, you know, fifty-five, that was, that was quite a surprise, you know, in regards to, we got the light poles that we wanted, they were close to what was on Main Street as far as the style, they quit making that style about fifteen years ago, but we got the ones that was close, it's the same manufacturer, same quality, and looking forward to, I was glad, you know, that that type was selected and we went with that.
Is this just for posts and globes or is it installation or?
No, this is just for the materials. The Street Department will be installing them and setting them up. This was just the purchase and the bidding.
So we don't have to worry about the low bid having a lot of change orders and everything?
No.
Okay, good, thank you.
No, because they were all bidding on the same product.
Any other questions for Jay?
Thank you, sir.
Want to step out? Go out.
And actually, before we go on, I'm going to yield to Cassie. You have a, you want to talk about your 5K run? We have it on down the agenda, but.
Yeah, I have maps for you guys, just to give you a heads up. Just type it down, that'd be cool. Um, I'll just go right to it. I have a 5K that I want to do to benefit the Special Olympics and we're going to do it, we're trying not to use all of Main Street because we know it has a lot of traffic flow, but we wanted to catch the end part of East Main Street, so we would just need that area and by the Stockard U Center going up through that way. Other than that, there's just the main roads we would need help with, but we're doing the 5K April 7th, which is a Sunday. I also know there's a banjo player coming in that's supposed to bring outside source, so I'm making, it's from nine to two, so it'll give us time to get out of the way for the incoming traffic that's coming for that event. But just if you guys could say yeah, that'd be good.
I think probably our primary interest is that our police chief may take a look at it and I can already coordinate any concerns he might have, but in terms of the concept, we have you down on the consent agenda, I'd be happy to entertain a motion now.
Same.
So move. Second. Second. Any questions or discussion?
Not if you run it by Mitch Tacey.
The only concern is make sure we have enough safe pathway through if an emergency occurs and so on. I think that's a very noble event. Sure, we'll welcome it. Is there? Call for question. Call for question. All those in favor?
Hi.
Post? You're in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Michael, are you still with us?
Yep, I'm here. Before you start though, I received a text from Jay that says, "You hurt me, big guy, you hurt me. I will get Rich back, Junior, really." Just for the record.
That is now.
Um, I do have the financial report, you have that in front of you, condensed report for general fund ending January 31st, 2013. Point of note, our revenues year-to-date, as of January 31st, are two million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Our expenditures in general fund year-to-date are one million, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. This is a positive net difference of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and four cents revenues over expenditures. Again, you have the condensed report, if you would like a full detailed report, I'll be happy to provide that to you, just see me after the meeting. In old business, just an update on the West Virginia Army National Guard Conference Center. I've received notification, and we should be getting something official for the city, that Congresswoman Capito's office was advised the other day that the USDA has approved funding for the Buchanan Upsher Conference Center at Brushy Ford. So we should be getting something, I don't know if there'll be a photo op or something along with that, but USDA has approved that. And again, we're in the final processes of closing on that agreement, and you'll have more information about that at future council meetings. Also, the annexation of the property. Allen Brushy Ford got to accommodate the Conference Center and Army National Guard, was approved by the Upsher County Commission last month, and that has been recorded with the county clerk's office, so that will be actually effective, I think, March 1st, part of the city of Buchanan. The Hurricane Sandy Storm, I just want to finish up on that. The city of Buchanan's reimbursement was submitted and approved by FEMA in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Check should be in the mail. So that's been approved through federal government, we should be getting that money for reimbursement, and I would hopefully say in the next month or so. Buchanan Comprehensive Plan update, representatives from WVU and WVU Extension Office are in the process of conducting studies for our comprehensive plan for our 2014 submission. Again, these studies are, include a traffic study, land use, and housing. I understand they were here last Friday doing some legwork. I'm in contact with Mike Doherty to see what their findings were and what the status of that is early on. Under new business, the Finance Committee, telling council as a whole, recently held a budget session to review the General Fund Department budget requisitions for fiscal year 2013-14. Recommendations of the Finance Committee will be brought before the entire council at a special budget session. This is a point of note, scheduled for Monday, March the 4th, at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. So please make note in the budget session with all of council, March 4th, at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. I encourage all members of council to attend so we can finalize the budget for next year and the other council members and can provide input. All part of the formal process that we go through preparing our budget for the state auditor's office. And finally, Municipal Stabilization Fund. Our office will be making a transfer in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the Municipal Stabilization or Rainy Day Fund tomorrow. This will bring our current Municipal Stabilization Fund to five hundred, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars and sixteen cents, five hundred, one hundred, five hundred, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, sixteen cents. This is currently in a money market account with a whopping interest rate of .08 percent. Hold your seat on that one. If we do move the funds over to a CD, the interest rate, hold your seats again, will be .4 percent. Very attractive. We do have an option, if we want to keep this money in our money market, again, the rate is .08. If we do slide this over to a CD, the interest rate will be .4, a little bit better. Of course, with any CD, we will have restrictions and penalties for early withdrawal. Help dispose this in front of council to see what they would like to do. My personal recommendation would actually be to transfer all of those monies, the one forty plus the remainder, for the total of five hundred, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, sixteen cents, over to a CD with an interest rate of .4 percent.
What kind of term would a CD?
Or we can put it in a sock.
What kind of term would the CD handle?
Twelve months.
Michael, are there any debts out there that we could prepay without a penalty that, you know, for example, the police vehicles, are we paying it? What's the interest rate on those?
The interest rate varies on those vehicles because of different financing we've done throughout the years. I could get you those percentages, they're, they're pretty decent. I think one of our last ones was 4.5 percent or something for the three that we just recently bought. We do have a street sweeper, of course, that we're doing on lease purchase. My intent was to double up those payments in the budget, which I'll be also presenting to you all when we have our session, so we can pay that off early. It's kind of like having that money in reserve. I see what you're saying. I can get this interest rate.
I would suggest you take a whole half a million dollars, but you might want to take fifty or a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand and pay off some things that are, we're paying three, four, or five percent on. That'd make more sense to me than just sticking to a CD or money market that doesn't get you anything. I mean, that's something to consider. Is there any value to having multiple CDs even though they might be one year in length, just so that if you need part of the money, you don't have to incur penalty on the rest of it?
You could break it up. You could break that up into a couple if you'd like, two or three.
Would the interest rate go down if you broke it up?
Not that much.
To what?
I can't imagine.
Two, three point eight?
I can't imagine, yeah. No, no.
I'd say a hundred thousand, you're just going to get probably the best rate.
Right.
I agree with Rich on that, we're going to do it. Multiple CDs on that would prevent the penalties that we have to use them.
I mean, we don't, you know, we don't expect that we're going to have to use that in twelve months. We haven't so far. You know, anything that happens or we do dip into that, it'll probably be something beyond our control that occurred, but I feel comfortable that that would not be touched unless something popped up, which I can't give you any assurances on that, but I think.
Typically, am I right that the penalty just reduces it to whatever it would have been in a savings or money market again?
Uh, I believe so. I believe so, there may be a monetary amount fixed to it as well.
Reduce about .3 percent. Yeah, there wouldn't be much change. Well, I think before you do any transfer, you ought to take a look at what, what the budget's going to be for the next fiscal year and, I mean, I, again, if you can save three to six thousand dollars while paying off some things early, that makes more sense to me.
Could look at, I could look at some of our police vehicles, not the one we recently financed, but maybe a few others that are maybe a year out from being paid off and get some of those out of the way. If it's pleasure council, I'll just hold off on transfer and get back to you at the next council meeting.
Now, would it seem, if you're a year out from paying them off, you're down to paying, paying the principal anyway, not the interest, so would it be better to look at the ones that financed recently? Where you're still paying the interest on them instead of the principal?
I think all options are on the table. I'm just directing you with the, with the Municipal Stabilization Fund because that's what we had budgeted in for this year, and that's kind of always been the idea. We can delineate from that, I don't, I don't see where that's going to be an issue, it's just I know we, we've talked about building up a rainy day fund, because we really essentially haven't had that in the past. We've been very successful in establishing that, but, you know, whatever the pleasure of council, I'd be more than happy to look into.
Put it in the bowl, swish it around, see what comes up?
Well, hold on. I'll hold off transfer and report back to you. It's like for me to give you a call, dude.
No, it's not necessary, I just, I just think there's more options than what you had suggested. You know, you're very capable of doing that, so come up with some ideas for us.
Okay, we'll do it. Again, we just always looked at the stabilization fund, so I just looked at those two options for us, because I know that we've been wanting to put that money back, so. Okay.
Call Jay, ask him.
Text Jay. And that's all I have, unless there are any other questions.
Questions for Mike? Thank you. Matt?
Police chief this week. I had it down, it was fire chief.
Oh. I was the fire chief by the time. I showed up down there and I said, "Nah, it was him." I'm a senior police department. Try to familiar myself around here.
I hope I can read all.
Yeah, yeah. I usually try to be brief. the agenda where our council is going to entertain the first reading of the ordinance banning synthetic substances in the city. And I just want to speak to that just briefly if I could. I do want to voice my support for that ordinance, as well as the support of all the officers of the police department. Too many times we deal with individuals that have abused these substances and it's often been negative results. We've seen it far too many times with, just all throughout our community, and our children certainly aren't immune to this. So I think that by establishing this ordinance, the city is showing some leadership throughout the state of West Virginia by saying that we're taking a stand against this. We recognize that it's, it is a problem, it is a scourge on our society and our citizens, and, you know, we're not going to have it here in town. And I just want to thank you in advance for considering this, want to voice our support for it, and thank you for your leadership in considering. Without further ado, the, as promised last time, happily present the 2012 year-end report for the Buchanan Police Department. And this report is a little different from years past. Typically in years past, I've come before council and I've talked about the various activities that we've had, everything from the hours, how our hours were spent, the number of reports taken, number of arrests that were taken, and kind of left it at that. I wanted to jazz it up a little bit, if you will, and add in some graphs and kind of paint a bigger picture as to what we're dealing with across the board, not only in the year past, but over time, what the crime picture is in the city of Buchanan. And what we have, and you'll see when I get to this, is the last three years. And I hope to have this report serve as a template for future reports, and in the years to come, we'll have a five and even a ten-year trend on down the road and have a really good picture as to what the criminal activity is like here in the city of Buchanan. But this presents a pretty good picture, where we came from in the last year and what we've looked like in the last three years. It went a little above and beyond as well, from what I've typically presented, because I felt that when you sit down and look at everything globally that the police department does throughout the year, and that's everything from our enforcement activities to our community policing activities, which are many, as well as the services that we provide, that's simply just giving you the numbers of the arrests that we made is a disservice to the officers of the police department, because they work powerlessly to keep our city safe and keep our citizens educated with a lot of things, and establish good, lasting relationships and partnerships throughout the community. So I've highlighted that in the second part of the report, if you will, that looks at our, our activities, our events, and as well as the services that we provide. So I'll highlight each of those when I get to it. If you want to follow along, on the first page, the first page is the spread of the activity of the police department, and I'll go down through these. Some of these I will skip because I want to highlight in the preceding pages that, that show trends. In the year 2012, police officers issued 773 warning tickets in traffic stops. Officers made 2,406 traffic stops in 2012. These next two I want to distinguish a little bit, I know this has been the source of discussion over the last few years, but I have it in two categories for a distinct reason. Calls answered in 2012 by the city police officers is 5,586, and of those, 2,079 were 911 calls. So you ask, well, what's the difference? Why do you have both? The calls answered section of 5,586, each officer self-reports each month, and from those numbers, we compile monthly report and then automatically the yearly report. And they record every call that they receive, and a call is just more than a 911 call, it's every call for service that requests our time, whether that be a phone call, which, to be quite honest with you, in the day shift, probably a full two-thirds, and I'm just kind of throwing that number out there, but it's, it's a majority, of our calls in the daytime are phone calls, are people that come in to the front counter as opposed to 911 calls. So the calls answered looks at a broad category of what demands an officer's time, and this is how the officers report when they've been called, whether it be a phone call, whether it be somebody fighting us down at the side of the street, whether it be somebody coming to the office, all of those count as, as a call answer. And certainly, of that 5,586, it also includes the 911 calls, they will count those as well. So that's why we have the subcategory of that, to distinguish that specifically for 911 calls to our comm center, there were 2,079. I will highlight one down in the report, what the top calls were to 911 as well, so we see what kinds of calls are being made and types of services being asked of our officers. Next row down is community policing. This is the breakdown in the hours that the officers spend in their workday. Officers spent 1,138 hours in 2012 in community policing activities. And I think that number will speak for itself when I get to the second half of the report that looks at all of the different events and the activities that we, that we do with all, all manner of vehicles in our, in our community. Officers spent 6,079 hours patrolling our streets, 2,734 hours doing traffic. Traffic is everything from running radar, any kind of traffic violation like stop signs, traffic accidents, anything that would relate to traffic, that's a broader category, would fall here. Officers spent 3,616 hours conducting criminal investigations, spent 241 hours in court, spent 1,893 hours writing reports. And in the other category, 2,102 hours. And the other category is basically administrative type duties, whether it be meetings, paperwork, a lot of those hours are mine that are recorded here. During patrol, officers logged 107,372 miles under patrol vehicles. Accidents I'll skip over because I have a specific section where I'll highlight this. Officers wrote 131 parking tickets, and then the final is criminal reports, I'll skip over that because I have a specific section for that as well. Moving on to the second page is.
Question about your parking tickets. Is that all officers or is that just?
All officers.
Okay. How's that break down to the parking enforcement officers?
Yeah, we don't count his numbers because he's not under the police department, he doesn't work for us, so we don't, we don't count his numbers. Second page is the first graph, shows the trend of our traffic stops, and the trend for all of these graphs from here on out is 2010, 11, and 12. And you can see that it's fairly consistent, there was a little upswing in 2012 for traffic stops. It jumped about seven or eight hundred over the last year or two.
And is that because we have more coverage?
I think that's exactly what that is. 2012, as you know, the last couple of years before that, there was a lot of transition going on with the police department, a lot of time hiring new officers during this transition, a lot of training time spent at the academy, and 2012, we were back to our full authorized strength at that point and getting everybody trained. Plus, there were two brand-new officers, and it's always a tendency of a new officer to want to stop cars, and I was in the same boat myself when I first started years ago. But, so yeah, I would equate that to those.
And a real quick question, roughly that's about 70 vehicles a day are stopping, is that, just seems high to me, and again, I go back to my image of Mayberry, but, you know, 70 vehicles a day in our town are being stopped for, like, stop signs, I can't.
There's a, yeah, I mean, it's a vast array of, of reasons we stop cars. I mean, it's, it could be anything from complaints that we have in the neighborhood for speeding, stop sign violations, we certainly had enough of those this summer with the, you know, the introduction of the stop signs here on Main Street. You know, we did checkpoints throughout the year, so some are more successful than others in terms of, you know, stopping cars.
This would include every, every?
Everything that's called into the comm center.
That's called to the comm center?
Yeah.
Every time an officer says, runs a license plate?
Every time I say, "I'm on a traffic stop," I call that into the comm center. That, so I take this number straight from their report.
It could be a five-minute stop or it could be?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, it's a wide, it could be, you know, it could be a ball of, it could be, and this is the age of the cell phone too, and we get a lot of reckless driving complaints, and that may, or may not be high in the 911 calls, but there are a lot of reckless driving calls that people call in to the comm center, and that, that's directly equated to the age of the cell phone. Everybody's mobile and has access to that, and will call for our service to respond to those types of things. I do highlight traffic tickets. Do not confuse this number with tickets being written. Just because we stopped 2,406 cars doesn't mean we wrote 2,406 tickets.
Or even a warning.
Correct. So if you go to the next page, accident reports and injuries. So if you go to the next page, accident reports and injuries, it's fairly consistent. If you look at the graph, in 2012, officers took 195 accident reports. There, of those accident reports, there were 48 with injuries, and there was one fatality in 2012, back in August on Route 20 North. If you look at the breakdown, 25% of the accidents that occurred, or that occurred in 2012, were accidents with injuries. So three-fourths without injuries is a pretty good number. These are the same numbers that we present to AAA each year for the Traffic Highway Safety Awards, to show that our roadways are safe here in the communities. Some of those numbers. The next page is a breakdown of the criminal reports. This is a table, and I'm going to go over this in detail. The next page is where I'll cover in detail. This is a breakdown of reports of 2010, 11, and 12 each month, showing the totals. If you will look at that page and the next page that goes with it, that has the graphs, I do want to highlight the significance of this particular statistic. And if you see, in 2010, the police department took 343 criminal reports, offense reports. 2011, that number jumped up to 551. And 2012, the officers took 641 reports. Last year saw some of the busiest months in terms of how many reports we took that I've seen in 16 years being employed as a police officer with this city. In fact, there were, I'm just a numbers guy. It seemed to remember that one of the highest months that I'd known prior to last year was around 50-plus reports, and that was around Strawberry Festival time years ago. There were times where we would have 60, 70-plus reports a month last year. And this year has already, for two months in, it's no different. We took over 80 reports in January, and we're up to, it's almost two a day in February, and we're up on pushing 40 in February. If you look at the graph page, there's another table that says number of occurrences, and I want to distinguish this number between that and the reports. 641 is the actual number of reports that were taken in 2012. Now, as you've heard me talk about many times, a lot of, in a lot of situations, a report can represent multiple crimes. So if I, for instance, we had a situation here in town the other day where somebody shoplifted in one of our stores and was drunk while they did it and chose to run from the police. That was three crimes that occurred in one report. So there often times will be multiple crimes reported in a single report. And that's what this next table is, is number of occurrences. This is the number, if you want, truly want to get a picture of what the crime situation is in Buchanan, it's good to look at the number of occurrences, not just strictly the number of reports were taken, because that can kind of skew it, because one report will represent many occurrences. You want to look at the number of occurrences, and that's why I put that there. In 2010, there were 479 different crimes that were reported in 343 reports. That number jumped up in 2011 to 767 different crimes that were reported in 551 reports. And last year, 913 crimes was reported in 641 reports. So it's close to doubling in the last three years, the number of crimes that we're reporting. I will highlight, if you look at the bottom, I do highlight the types of crimes that we're reporting. I picked the top five, kind of get a feel. In 2012, the top five crimes reported to city police. Number one was shoplifting. 174 different instances of shoplifting reported to city police in 2012. The second is drug offenses. And this kind of goes with what I've been saying for years now as to what our primary concerns are throughout. And of course, it speaks also to what we have on our agenda tonight with the synthetic substances, you know, I'm glad that we're recognizing that. There were 82 different occurrences, and this is both misdemeanor and felony that are added together, drug offenses. Next was grand and pete larceny, 62 different occurrences in 2012. Number four was destruction of property, 48. And number five was hit and run, which was 31. That's the top five.
Matt, can you link number one, two, and three together as all of them or partial of them related to drug?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. If you've got a drug problem in your town, you're going to have a theft problem in your town. The two go hand in hand. And certainly, yeah, I would absolutely link the three together. And another reason why we see, if you look at the graphs, why we're seeing it escalating as the problem persists, those are the types of things that you see in your community. I do want to point one thing out on this page before we move on, and that's the clearance rate. The clearance rate has remained consistent throughout the last three years. In fact, it's hovered around 69%, 68%. In 2012, the clearance rate was 68%. That means 435 of the 641 reports were cleared. What I mean when I say cleared, cleared means a couple of different things. It means either there has been an arrest made in this case, which is most often the case, that a case is cleared. Or it could mean there's an exceptional clearance. And an exceptional clearance can be a variety of things. It could mean prosecution has been declined, for whatever reason. It could mean the victim is refusing to cooperate. It could mean that the offender has died. So any of all of those things could lead to an exceptional clearance. We do see that. However, most of the cases are cleared by arrest. The vast majority of them are cleared by arrest.
Matt, while you're on that page, I noticed the shoplifting, 174. I mean, you're talking three a week.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
And that's got to take a lot of time to work those up and clear them and so on.
It does.
Is there any possibility, or have you looked into, or what's the standard for getting maybe, in a sense, officers that are at a particular store, maybe not part of the police force, but a security patrol or something? Are there towns that look at other ways to try to curb shoplifting? Because that's got to take a huge amount of time.
Yeah, it's, and luckily, you know, a lot of these cases are brought to us by a store's private employee. They have employees that are in charge of asset protection. So they will actually catch the individual and return him over to us for investigation and arrest, and then ultimately file the papers for prosecution. At one time, there were communities where police stations would have substations in larger stores.
I remember that conversation.
And, you know, I had entertained that idea at one time, but without naming any particular business, that, to my understanding, is against policy. It's a company policy, but they don't have that anymore. Not just here, I think, just across the board. So, you know, it's really upon the private detective, the detective of the business, to curb that. And, you know, I know that they do certainly have that, and they're very good at it. And we work, have a very good relationship with them. Short of that, there are many occasions where, when we're not bouncing from one thing to another, officers will stop at stores and will walk through and be a visible presence. I know that's practiced with our officers. And, you know, he's helped to establish a lot of good rapport, an officer in particular, with the employees. And, you know, I think that's, I think there's been a plus to that. And the officer I'm speaking of works midnight shift, and, you know, that's when you see all your larger thefts, you know, just because people think that it's late at night, you can get away with it more. And so he's made an effort to be a very visible presence, and something that we think has been a positive for us, and we'll certainly continue that.
How many, what percentage of these are not Walmart?
I couldn't tell you that. I mean, probably not very many. Yeah. Meaning, not very many aren't.
Yeah.
Well, one thought there is if we could curb that, it may in fact help curb some of the drug problem if they can get the money to buy the drugs, maybe they'll have to back off on the drugs or whatever.
Or they could go from the shoplifting to the grand pete larceny, breaking and entering, all that stuff.
Yeah.
I don't think, the drug problem is, we've got to get rid of the problem.
It's amazing how many...
Yeah, it's more than I've seen, again, in my career. And, of course, we have a lot of larger businesses than when I first started out, you know, back in the 90s. But even so, it's excellent.
Well, the amazing thing is the amount of money this takes out of the stores. At this 174 shoplifting charges, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you figure, that could be anything from, you know, a $5 bracelet to a, you know, we've seen the range from that to well over $1,000 in person. We've got people load shopping carts up and push them out the store and go running with them. We've had them take laptops and throw them over the fence, first thousands of dollars, just in one shot. So sure, that's quite a haul. But again, luckily with their asset protection, we are able to recover a lot of that when it occurs. The next three pages, I won't go over them in too great detail because we do have some graphs that will highlight this as well. But this is just an itemized listing of all of the misdemeanor and felony arrests made throughout 2012. So if you want to see how many batteries the police department made, and if you want to see how many each month, we have them broken down by month. I will highlight the numbers. In 2012, officers made 593 misdemeanor arrests and 93 felony arrests. And again, I go into just a little more detail on the top five of those here in just a couple seconds. The next page is the graphs that shows the trend of misdemeanor and felony arrests from 2010 to 2012. And if you look, misdemeanors are steadily climbing. There were 403 in 2010, 497 in 2011, and then 593 in 2012. And a lot of that has to do with the increase in shoplifting arrests. Felonies are fairly consistent. The reason there was such a spike, if you will, in 2010, is showing there were 170 then as opposed to 92 in 2011 and 93 in 2012. 2009 was a phenomenal year for drug investigations for our police department. We had multiple drug investigations and multiple arrests that were made at that time. And as a result, there was overlap from that year on those investigations into 2010. And when those cases were ultimately brought before grand jury and into circuit court, oftentimes when you start an investigation, it may be one particular incident. But when you get everything out on the table and you present it to grand jury, it may be multiple incidents. For instance, if we're investigating somebody for selling drugs, when it's presented to grand jury, there may be three or four counts of delivery. There may be another count of when the arrest was made and search warrant was served, possession with intent of delivery given if we seize a large amount of drugs. So you're going to see, when grand jury is presented with these cases, you're going to see the arrest, felony arrests increase as a result and an overlap of these investigations. So that's why 2010 was showing such a large, a large number, was because of the overlap The next page is the citations. So if you compare this back to the traffic stops, citations are fairly steady across the board. In 2012, officers wrote 1,023 citations compared to 815 in 2011 and 1,118 in 2010. So it's, give or take a little bit, it's fairly consistent over the last three years. If you look at the next page, these are the top fives that I talked about. I highlight the traffic right off the bat in 2012, comparing it to the last page where we recorded 1,023 traffic citations. If you look at the top five, the first one was no proof of insurance. There were 295 citations written for this. Most of these, in fact, probably the vast majority of these are dismissable. For instance, if an individual stopped and they don't have insurance, they don't have a card, or maybe their card expired, an officer will oftentimes go ahead and issue the citation for no proof of insurance. And then the individual who receives that citation can bring in proof that they had insurance, and that ticket is dismissed. So right off the bat, a full third of the tickets that were written in 2012 are dismissable. And again, bearing in mind, as I mentioned, you know, traffic stops occur for a wide array of reasons. We do at least three checkpoints through the year. And we see, again, sometimes when it's cold, we don't see as many cars, and we're not out there as long, as opposed to warmer months, we see more cars and we're out there longer. A lot of the tickets written in checkpoints, and again, checkpoints recorded, because we run these licenses when they come through, not everybody, but everybody that receives a citation in the checkpoint and comm center, we run that through comm center. So a lot of the no insurance citations do come from checkpoints. The second most, or the second highest traffic citation issued is speeding, and that's 155. And that's just a little over 10% of the tickets that are written are speeding, actual speeding tickets. The next, the third category is another ticket that's dismissable, and that's expired MBI. By state code, there is a grace period. Anybody that has an inspection sticker that hasn't been expired for more than two months, within five days, if they get it inspected, they can bring that proof in to city hall and that will be dismissed. So again, adding this 129 to the 295 insurance tickets, it's a larger percentage of tickets that are issued by the city police are dismissable. I should also, before I continue in the top five, I should point out that the 1,023 citations that are written don't necessarily mean 1,023 cars. There are many times, like I spoke about, how one report will represent multiple crimes. One traffic stop may represent two or three citations that are issued. So if I stop somebody for speeding and their license is revoked for unpaid citations, and they don't have insurance, and their inspection sticker's expired, well, you're looking at four violations. Now, does the officer always do all four? Most of the time, no. They'll pick and choose and maybe write two and give them a warning for two. There's a lot of warnings that go in, even though tickets are actually written, there's still warnings that go along with those as well. So just because you see the 1,023 traffic citations, that certainly doesn't represent that many cars getting a ticket. That's just how many citations were issued total. And again, some of those are representative of multiple citations for one traffic stop. The fourth highest traffic ticket was expired registration of 86, and then driving on a suspended license, and that's 79. The top five misdemeanor arrests in 2012 was 172 shoplifting arrests, 50 unlawful consumption arrests. And I might add that that number is way down, in my experience, over the last several years. That number used to consistently be over 100 in the last, several years ago. So even though that's the second highest arrest in 2012, that number comparatively is certainly is down. And I'm talking years ago. DUI first offense, there were 36 arrests made for that. That number's also down. That number used to be over 100 also years ago. And I don't equate that to the officers not doing their job. I equate that to the officers doing their job. We work DUI grants year-round and have consistently... round and have consistently done so over the last several years. And we've caught some flack for that, but if it saves one life, I'll not make apologies for that. And that's our goal, is to be out here, to be a presence, to be seen, to focus on what was obviously an issue, driving drunk on our roads and highways, and putting a stop to that. And if we save one life, and I always tell my officers this, when you make a DUI arrest or if you come out and you work a checkpoint one night and it's really cold and you don't want to be out, or you work, if you've worked all day and you've got to work a few hours overtime and you come out four hours extra in the nighttime, which is what I used to do when I was a patrolman, I would work day shift on Saturday, then come back out at 9:00 at night and work six more hours for the UI patrol. It's very tiring. And so, our officers will do that, but they do it because they believe in keeping our roads and highways safe. And I've told them this many times, you will never know how many lives you truly save. You cannot quantify that. If you made one DUI arrest, you don't know that five minutes later, they might have went down the road and wrecked and killed themselves or somebody else. Where the simple fact that you're out and you're seen may make somebody think twice about driving while under the influence, and it may save their life or somebody else's. With the simple fact that we conduct these checkpoints, that most people appreciate, but we have caught flack over that. But for the simple fact that people see us out and know that we do that, if it makes them think twice, they've done their job. And that's what we're trying to do, is keep people safe.
Is it state or federal law that you have to publish the location to those DUI?
It's case law. It's in case law.
Case law.
Yeah. So, that number's down, and I tip my hat to the officers for that because they worked tirelessly over the last several years to keep that number down. The next arrest is possession of marijuana, misdemeanor possession of marijuana, 33, and then trespassing was 28. And the top felony arrests, forgery and utterance was tied to 12 in 2012. 11 conspiracy. Conspiracy is often, felony conspiracy particularly, is often utilized to, it coincides with drug offenses. And then finally, I added this in there. There were nine delivery controlled substance arrests made in 2012. I added the top five for 2011 and 2010 for comparison. For the most part, they're fairly the same. And the same with 911 calls. That's the final table in the bottom right-hand corner of your top five page. 2012, of the 2079 911 calls, 203 were for accidents. Now, a lot of times you ask, well, why weren't there that many accident reports? A lot of times, there are non-reportable accidents, which means an accident that either occurs on private property or accidents with a total, and this is rare anymore, but accidents with a total, some total of $500 or less in damage. The next, second highest 911 call received was alarms. This was 155. Shoplifting was 146. Why are the arrests higher? Because sometimes when they're called to respond to the business, there's more than one person that's been stopped. Welfare concerns, 128, and there were 87 calls for domestics. Well, we'll point this out, active. The comm center differentiates between active and inactive domestics. These were actually going on at the time of the 911 call, 87 occurrences in 2012. That's consistently between that and DUI and the drug issues. It's consistently been the issues that we have seen in the city police, at least during the duration of my career of the last 16 years. That ends the activity and arrest portion of the report and brings me to the second part, and that is the events. And we added some pictures. These are all the events, all the major events that the police departments took part in in 2012. There's a little blurb for each one. I will, I just want to highlight by title each one simply because most of these do not represent just a one-time shock. Most of these represent multiple weeks that we've spent with organizations, multiple weeks that we spent conducting these classes, these programs. And in the background leading up to these, it represents a great amount, a phenomenal amount of preparation to get these ready and present to our community. The first was our 2012 Citizens Police Academy, which was the first of its kind in the city for the last 10 years. We'd gotten away from it a decade prior. We had a very successful run with it at that time and decided the time was right to reintroduce the program. Had a lot of success, a lot of good interaction with the participants that took part in this program. The next, on the next page, is the naming of the safety frog pokes, which stands for police officers keep everyone safe. This is a collaboration that we had with Head Start here in Upshur County. We are partners in education with Head Start, and we decided that the safety frog was just far too generic for the kids. We'd used it at several of the presentations and events that they have, and we wanted the kids to get actively engaged in the naming of the safety frog. And this fell right at the time of the election, so we inserted a democratic lesson with this as well. And the students got to select some names and vote as a class. And each submission from each class was given to the police department, and our committee here selected pokes. You can see pokes, and we got a cameo from the sheriff of Lewis County here with pokes. The next, kind of gets hand in hand with this, and that is the Head Start Fun Day. This is an event that actually we're gearing up for now. It occurs every March at the Armory, and it's a time for Head Start students and their family to come out and learn about safety and the services that are available to them in the community. And we've been an active part of that for at least the last two or three years. We'll continue to do so. The next, on the next page, is the Rachel's Challenge Field Day. This is something that's been going on at the high school for a number of years. Now, this year, or last year and this year included, we were asked by the high school to be a part of this. They wanted to, in between all of the events that occurred, have little tents or booths set up for kids that were educational in nature and gave them something to do with their downtime. So, we agreed to do that. We went up and had a little tent set up, and we had our fatal vision goggles that simulate impairment. And we talked, we gave an impairment lesson and what effects alcohol and drugs would have on the human body with students. So, you can imagine that was quite a hit with the students. And I learned not to let, we have six goggles, do not let all six out at once because it's a nightmare gain of effect. You have to track them down. They disappear quickly. The next occurs in the summer, and this is an annual event that we've been having with the Stocker View Center for a number of years now, and that's the Bike Riding with the Cops event. Throughout the summer, as much as we can, we do engage in bike patrol throughout our communities, making contacts with a lot of people in our parks. Specifically, I like to spend a lot of time down at the walking trail. That's heavily utilized, so we try to be a presence down there. And those that attend Camp Buccaneer at Stocker View Center, one day, we incorporated a bicycle safety lesson into their camp experience. We have them bring their bikes to camp that day. We go over bicycle safety, and then we take all the youngsters on a bicycle ride from Stocker View Center down to the walking trail, make a lap, and then back. So, we ride about a little over a mile with them. So, we promote safe bicycle riding and fitness with our youth. The next is something we've been involved in for a number of years as well, and that's the U Care pool parties. U Care is a group that meets every month. It's very instrumental in offering a lot of alternatives, safe alternatives to underage drinking in our community. U Care itself stands for the Upshur Community Alcohol Reduction Effort. This was a group that was formed in 2008 after the unfortunate traffic crash and loss of several young ladies, teenage young ladies in our community. And a group of concerned organizations and individuals banded together to have these programs and to see that we avoid these types of tragedies in the future. One of the alternatives that U Care offers throughout the summer are pool parties for middle school and high school age kids. And typically, there's four pool parties throughout the summer, and they're well chaperoned by members of U Care. And they also like to have a police presence, a uniformed police presence, again, to make a good connection with the students and have educational discussions with them as well. So, you can see our patrolman Robert taking part in one of the U Care pool parties. And again, we try to make all of those. The next event is monumental. In fact, it's, I talked about the buildup to the event itself. The event itself may be one night, but it takes many months to get ready. In fact, we're already starting to get ready for this year's National Night Out event, which occurs the first Tuesday of every August. And the police department has been doing this for the last seven years, has had a tremendous amount of success with this, with creating partnerships with different members of the community, a chance to get to meet people, a chance to discuss the services that the police department has available, as well as other public safety agencies and other service agencies. Last year was the second year that we had the National Night Out event at the high school pool. And we felt that this was just the perfect venue to bring more and more people out to the event. And we saw probably, what do you think, Jessica, probably around 300, at least 300, 300 plus members of our community come out and really have a good time. It's good, clean family fun. Everything's free. That's why it takes so much time because we have to work partnerships with businesses to work on getting donations. You know, so everything from swimming is free, the drinks are free. If somebody wanted a bite to eat, that's the only thing that charged them. So, we're very proud to have this as part of the police department. In our partnership with Head Start, we provided, each, at the beginning of each school year, we provide training to their faculty and staff. And the training focuses on drug issues, domestic issues, traffic safety, bus safety. So, we go and instruct their faculty and staff over a two-day period in these types of issues. Children's Festival is something that we're very much involved in. We're able to hand out bicycle helmets that were purchased through a grant this past year. And we're constantly seeking these types of things to be able to offer to youth in our community. This last one, you've heard me talk about a lot, and that is the forensic unit, which lasted over, I believe it was a nine week, nine weeks that we spent with the gifted classes at the middle school, focusing on a mock crime scene, ultimately a mock trial, and incorporating a lesson, again, as much as we can get this out here to our kids. You know, we see, we've talked about the drug problem, the drug issues, and we see that attacking that is twofold. Certainly, there's the enforcement issue that we talked about, but there's also the preventive issue as well. If we can reach, if we can reach one child and get them to choose a drug-free life, then we're on the right path. And so, we're trying to inject that message as much as we can, whether it be at National Night Out, or whether it be the forensic unit, or whether it be at the Children's Festival. And certainly, even though this focused on a mock crime scene and a mock trial, the underlying issue was underage drinking and underage drug abuse. And so, we're really trying to incorporate that lesson with that as well. The next thing that takes place over the course of a week is how, and these two kind of go hand in hand on this last page, that's Halloween Safety. And this is a program we've been doing for a number of years. And all of our preschool through second grade, so we see about 600 students here in the city. And we talk about safe trick-or-treating, and really incorporated in the last several years because I saw a great need for this years ago, and that was stranger danger. A lot of kids just had no idea what to do when a stranger would approach them. So, we really try to hammer on that. And then that same week, Red Ribbon Week occurs. And you've heard us talk about that. That's another opportunity to go in our schools and give the anti-drug message to our students. And we've been very much a part of that as well for several years. The next page highlights the services that the police department officer offers in addition to our events. We offer fingerprinting services to the community. This is something that we started in the last couple of years. We charge $5 per fingerprint card, and in 2012, 49 folks chose to utilize this service. The city police also offers a traffic school for those tickets that aren't dismissed. To avoid getting points on their license, the individual has the option to take traffic school. And in 2012, 70 students took part in this program. And this is something the police department is involved in preparing for and presenting and teaching.
Is there a fee for that school?
There is, and I don't know.
Fifty.
What is it?
It's $50 in addition to the fine then.
$50. The next page highlights the training that the officers go through each year. Officers are required by law to have 16 hours of training each year. Supervisors, sergeant above, are required to have 24 hours of training every two years. Eight years has to be supervisory level training, and 16 can be any type of training. Officers, I've always challenged my officers to educate themselves and constantly strive to learn something new because this job is constantly evolving. And in 2012, officers logged 475 hours in the classroom training. One of those, and a large amount of those hours was Doug Nolan, who became certified as an EMT basic. And he took that upon himself, did that in his own time, but receiving law enforcement credit for it because the committee recognized that in Charleston. But you can see the wide array of training each officer had. Some of it was required training, like the radar training and the TASER training, and some of it was discretionary training, everything from school safety to tactical-type training throughout the year. So, this speaks well for the motivation of our officers to better themselves. And then finally, yeah, finally get to the last page, is the basic program. This one, another service that the police department offers and has for a number of years is the basic program. Those that receive an underage drinking citation, whether it be from the city police, the sheriff's department, or the state police, anybody in Upshur County because we've worked out agreements with our prosecutor and our magistrate court. In lieu of paying court costs and the fine and having that on the record, they can opt to pay the $100 fee for basic, which is significantly less than cost and the fine, and go through the basic program. And this includes completing an initial survey. It includes some class time where videos are shown, discussions are had about the harmful effects of alcohol. Again, getting that message out there. They also have to write a paper about what they learned from this program, and they have to contribute 16 hours of community service. And so, I'll break the numbers down, what we saw in 2012 in our basic program. 33 students took advantage of this program in 2012. Of that number, 27 were over the age of 18, six were under 18. This is the initial survey that I talked about. We gained a lot of the statistics from the students to kind of get a picture as to what, if there could potentially be alcohol issues. And some of the numbers are quite alarming. It's reported from the 33 that took the initial survey that the age of their first drink, the youngest age was eight years old. Eight years old, they had their first drink of alcohol. The average age of the first drink of the 33 were 15. It's 15 years old. So, that really puts things in perspective. 11 of the 33 experimented with illegal drugs, 15 have a family history of alcohol and drug dependency. The average consumption per student at a sitting is 4.6 beers. How you drink a .6 of a beer, I don't know. Maybe just, it's 4.6. 13 were females, 20 were males, 21 were wrestling students, 12 were non-wrestling students. The average GPA, and this could be alarming to some, I found it interesting, was 3.1. 3.1 was their average GPA. Two of the students are considered problem drinkers. And that is, if you look at a number of indicators like, do you have a high tolerance for alcohol? Do you blackout? Do you have a dependency? Any of those indicators, usually three or more indicate that you're a problem drinker. And two of the students who took the survey would be classified by that criteria as problem drinkers. 32 of the 33 students have not had any Thirty-two of the 33 students have not had any type of drug or alcohol counseling at all. So this program, even though it's not counseling per se, is, if you will, it's their first introduction to any kind of intervention, if you will. Ten of the students have built up a high drug or alcohol tolerance, and again, that's one of the indicators of a problem drinker. Students completed 528 community service hours. Five of the students drank by the age of 13, 26 drank by the age of 17, and three drank by the age of 10. Three of the 33 drank by the age of 10. Eighteen of the 33 students have successfully completed the program, completed all those requirements that I laid out. And by agency, the numbers are a little off. The city is showing 28, sheriff's department 7. I'm off by two, but that's, you get the rough idea of what the breakdown is. And that is the 2012 Buchanan Police Department hearing report. I proudly present that. I think it's my hats off to our officers for all the hard work that they do, especially in light of the fact that there's an increase in criminal activity, yet they're still clearing just as many in terms of the rate, clearing more crimes, but it's, the rate is just as much as what it was when it was half of what it was two or three years ago. So they're working harder at their investigations. I tip my hat to them. They're passionate about what they do with keeping a lot of these arrests down, DUIs that I highlighted. They're passionate about the community. They put a lot of time and effort into the community policing effort that the police department takes in, so I'm very proud to present this report, and I wouldn't permit if I don't recognize Jessica, our secretary, and Caitlin, our student volunteer from Westland, for putting on a lot of time. They spent the last two months writing this, gathering the statistics and writing this report. So my hats off to you ladies, very good job. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
I think before, I'm glad to get it.
I love the format this year.
Yeah, that's, this will be the format, this is the template, you know, it's a little more, I know it's a lot more engrossing, a lot more detailed, but I think it paints a better picture of what we're doing in the city police throughout the year.
Very quickly, in the basic program, raising about half complete the program.
Yeah.
Is it too long for them? They lose interest in it? They just, you know?
Yeah, I mean, some of that may be overlap as well. There may be some that have signed up at the end of 2012 that are still in the program as we speak. I have noticed that, there have been some that have issues with the community service hours. They don't, they think 16 is too much. We've tended to buck that. We've gotten some back on that, but we've stand, we stood firm on that.
If they don't complete the program, do they reinstate the funds?
Yes, sir. If they do not complete the program, we issue a letter to the judge or magistrate saying that they failed to complete the program, and then the original citation, the original charge is reinstated. We have to go through that.
And they forfeit their $100?
Yes, sir.
Are you getting complaints about 16 hours from the people who are going through the course, or from other people outside?
From the people, primarily from the people going through the course.
They ought to count themselves, what?
Yeah.
Well, I want to say that, I've told you before too, but I don't know what I've told counsel, and I certainly want to tell the people out here that, having ridden a couple of times with your midnight officer, I was amazed at what they do on the midnight shift. I've never seen so many alleyways in Buchanan that are traversed two or three times a night through the different alleys with the spotlights going and checking out everything, stopping by all the convenience stores, having a thumbs up to the people inside that are working and checking those out, walking through the local stores that are open 24/7. It's really heartening and nice to see that happening in Buchanan, and it certainly made me feel a lot safer knowing that he's going to go through my alley at 3 o'clock in the morning, and I commend you and the officers, and let's keep it up.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our distinguished senior engineer, Sam?
Did you forget why you came, Sam?
You want me to speak?
Yeah, only a few words.
We didn't have a sanitary board meeting today, and we talked about our MPDS permit, had an update on it. It was continued. The hearing is scheduled now for March 14th, so about three weeks from now. The attorney has Aqua Law, it's a law firm, Dick Sedgely is the attorney handling the case. They've submitted a couple of motions and requesting information from DEP, and DEP is very unresponsive. This is a matter of law, as we underlined it, this appeal, which there would seem to be legal procedures that both sides have to follow, and DEP seems to ignore all those matters, which is rather disappointing. Which follows into the next item. I mean, even though we're appealing this permit, we still are complying with the new permit, and they've issued a number of orders through that permit, and we have to submit reports about some of the issues that we're protesting. And I've talked about them, the toxic pollutants, heavy metals, copper in particular, this whole effluent testing and oxygen demand parameters. We write these reports, we offer what we think are solutions to some of the problems and request feedback, and we never hear from them. Maybe I'll get a whole lot of letters tomorrow, but so far, we have not gotten response to these reports. Over six months, we've submitted three or four different reports specifically asking for feedback. It's what we're offering, meet what you're looking for, is this a satisfactory approach? So we talked about those reports.
Sam, can I ask you a question on that? When you send those reports in, do you send it to a specific, specific individual, or just to the department? Or is there any way you can identify where the roadblocks are, or who's stalemating us?
Well, we send it to an official with the EP, the director of this section, water waste section, Scott Mandarola. He's not really the person who is responsible to review it's another section when it is. But we send these certified, so we know to get them, and they clearly are going to appropriate people.
Is there another person you can send it to, that supervisor?
Well, he's the responsible party. He is not sending it to the subordinate that is reviewing it, or sending it. That's how they handle their responsibilities, and everything is directed toward.
What does our attorney say that you're working with? Is this typical type of behavior that you've heard?
Well, he's pretty disappointed that, and somewhat concerned. Of course, our PO with the water resource, which is a hard DDP, and they're concerned that when I get an impartial hearing, and we do have opportunity to make next steps serving board, which could be a more impartial view, and it may be the failure of permitting section to respond to appropriately submitted requests of information would be harmful to their case in that situation. The fact that they ignore these requests certainly doesn't instill confidence in the whole process. So we also talked about the Westland Road project. We'd gotten a request from the Upshur County Development Authority, a sewer extension relative to potential economic development, probably about four or five thousand feet beyond the end of our system. And we had given that extension some consideration four, five, six years ago. We weren't able to do it, lack of financial support. We've been pursuing it in a little bit more of an eventual way, in terms of hiring a consulting engineer, working with Region 7, using Region 7 to hand the consulting engineering firm to help us identify, seek, ensure outside financial support. And in order to do that, it was a rather involved process of selecting consulting engineer for the last one and a half. Going through that process, and actually having a later process of selecting firms. During that process, we have also identified that we have to submit information about our proposed project to qualify for certain funding during the funding cycle that would run into 2014 by tomorrow. So it would have been something that we might have requested that the consulting engineer assist us with, since we haven't reached that place yet, where we're preparing that information. Noted that we've worked on a couple of projects with our, with the collection system. We did do the repair on Spring Street, and I would note that that is a repair. The Spring Street sewer is a true combined sewer, or the few in Buchanan where it intentionally and purposely carries stormwater and sanitary sewage. And we have a lot of interest in separating that line, which would mean for the full length between Main Street and the railroad, we would probably build a new storm sewer and then make some modifications to the existing sewer to convert into only sanitary. But the problem in the street was due to a pipe failure, and we spent about a week in mid-January and excavated that and made that repair. We're also working on providing service to Weatherford, and that's been an issue for four or five years, where there's been interest in providing service to that business. And they did want it, and they didn't want it, or they wanted it, but they weren't willing to commit to support. But those issues have been resolved, and we're working on that. We've been doing some repair and maintenance at the plant. I think we've reported that we employed a couple of new people on that crew, working with samples, and they're very effective. We've really improved the performance of, not the performance, but the output of that crew by adding those people. Talked about some of the projects that we're hoping to accomplish, and a couple to note, we want to go back in on the Richie Street project, where we worked on Pocahontas and Fayette, and do, we did the main trunk line on that storm sewer last spring, and we want to complete some of the collector storm sewers that would pick up the drop inlets and complete the work on those streets so that the repaving can be done without us going back in and digging it up again. And also on Gum Street, we think that that's one of our worst areas as far as extraneous flow, you've got parts of jawbone. Actually, we've had to go in and do repairs on jawbone in that area a couple times in the last few months. So that's another area that we're targeted. We, one of the new people that we hired for the line crew, Rick Heron, who was a grandson of Boyd Heron, worked for the waste department for years and years and years. After about seven months, he left, and I guess it was primarily for financial opportunity. We couldn't compete for his other opportunities. And we had some discussion of our emergency power at the plant, and what steps we're taking to be able to perform when the power out. And that was all.
Thank you, Sam. Any additional questions?
Does any of that sewer replacement that's done down there, does that include Barber Street, that area there?
Well, we intend to go across Barber and up to Tucker. We've already done a little bit near Tucker, so the whole Richie Street storm sewer would go from the river all the way up to the intersection of College and all.
Thanks. Thank you, Sam. Tom, Kelly? Tom?
We did it last night.
Tom?
We did some more tonight.
At our latest water board, or our last water board meeting, we discussed some area-wide optimization program, which is an EPA-funded program, in our case, out of Cincinnati. What that does is it afforded our plant an opportunity to network through EPA to a national water expert out of Ford College, Colorado. He is considered a water professional in the best available technology for surface water applications. So networking in that program, we sent two operators from Buchanan, there were five systems total that participated in the state of West Virginia. They met at all five different systems for a period of two years. Our last meeting will be April 30th, I believe, of this year, and we'll wrap up our participation. I've got wonderful compliments for our participation, not only in the ability of our small plant to produce some of the best water in the state, but also for the two operators that I presented to the program. They jumped in, and they're really receiving great reviews and leadership, just setting a very high standard for all the five systems in the state. They consider our two operators part of the top two in the program. I'm getting very good reports from, not only from EPA, but from State Health Department in Kansas and Charleston. So I'm just real proud of what those guys have done in this program, and what our group as a whole has done representing ourselves very well to EPA. So I'm real proud and grateful about that.
Why'd you mention their names?
Yes.
Their names, Jerry Myers, who's a Class 4 operator, and Melvin, Bob Perry, he's a Class 3. I will be bringing them to the water board once this program's finished. They're going to receive some awards, the city will receive some awards for that effort they put out, and if things work out, maybe I can bring them here and present them to you. And if things work out, maybe I can bring them here and present them to you. But the last scheduled date is April 30th unless that date gets changed. So, again, I'm just real proud of what they've done and been able to represent to the state and to EPA in Cincinnati. They're doing an excellent job of it. We also discussed bringing a temporary Class Three operator on full-time. Refresh your memory, a year, year and a half ago, we had some shortages that existed at the plant and plant operators that require a Class Three or Class Four water certification. There's a shortage not only in the state but nationwide. So, after we failed to find and fill those slots permanently, we took a different approach and we thought we'd bring on some long-term training opportunities. We hired a guy to do that. But we also were able to latch on to a part-time operator. In come April one, the water board has approved to hire this guy full-time. If it's going to work out for him, it's going to bring our staff up to full staff. And I think for the next five to 10 years, we're going to be well set with operators for the water plant. So, pleased to report that that's going to take place. We also discussed some training opportunities coming up. We're taking advantage through my connection with West Virginia Water and AWWA and West Virginia War program. I'm able to bring some of those training opportunities here to Buchanan. We're taking the advantage of the Stockard Use Center. Debbie has been instrumental in setting up conference rooms for those trainings. We can bring in anywhere from 20 to 30 operators from Shemellin County. When that happens, we also, as best I can, I can take my staff there and get them trained locally. We're down on transportation time to out-of-county events and all that, so we take advantage of all that that we can. We've got three of those opportunities coming up in the next month, a month and a half at Stockard, so I'm pleased to say that we're able to host some of that training event here. We discussed, there's a construction expo that takes place in Charleston every March, particularly geared toward Kelly and his men. There's a lot of expo, there's a lot of displays or vendors for anywhere from equipment, heavy equipment, to hand tools, to safety equipment, just anything you would need to run a construction site is available there. And also for the operator side, on my side, there's training opportunities also during that two-day course in March. The water board has allowed us to take advantage of that every year and will be participating in that again this year.
What are the dates?
The dates, I believe it's the 20th and 21st. It's Wednesday, Thursday in March. It's open, all you've got to do is register, which is free. You can go down and take advantage of classroom training, or you can walk through the vendor section. They open up, I guess, the Coliseum, Coliseum, thank you. And there's probably hundreds of vendors there with all kinds of things you can walk through and just spend a full day, day and a half just going out if you want to. Another part of our educational things that are required to do, some of the regulations require a certain level of training to be spent in a classroom by certified instructors. Kelly's going to have two of his newer employees participate in a water distribution training, which is a three or four-day event to be held at the Environmental Training Center in Ripley. That's going to be taking place in March. Once these guys come onboard, we have to get them certified through the State Health Department as officially in training. And then they have a time period in which they have to obtain a certification and test. They're coming to the end of that time periods that Kelly's got them registered to attend that training in early March or mid-March, I guess. Over on Kelly's side, the weather has permitted them to do some things such as abandon about 100, 120 feet of lime, two-inch lime on Lover Street. They were able to dig up and repair a hydrant that was leaking. The weather permitted that. The ground was actually fallen a little bit for them. Kelly has, is in charge of our required backflow devices. This is something that's required by the health department. He's revisited and re-inspected about 90%, is that correct, of the known places or facilities that's required to have these devices and has resuraveled a lot of those. So, he's staying on top of that, which keeps the health department happy. They've also repaired water leaks. I believe there's five that they had in January that they were able to take care of. And if anyone didn't get the word, I believe we've got a boil water on Beach Street for four customers that happened today, is that correct? So, if all goes well with that tomorrow, we'll give the results back from the lab. That will be one we'll be getting in case you get any calls on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions to Tom? Just for the benefit of the students, I can't help but realize Tom is responsible for taking the river water and processing it and getting it nice and clean, and then Kelly's responsible for delivering it to you. So, the city process is, what, 85%? 80, 85% of Upshur County's water?
About 85%.
And a few neighboring counties into a few neighboring counties and some customers. It's a pretty big operation.
Yeah, over 22,000 customers.
22,000, yes. And the operators are responsible for manning that plant two shifts a day?
Correct.
And keeping the tanks full so that when you turn on the faucet, you get clean, fresh drinking water. Buchanan's won many awards.
Class Three, so help yourself.
Thank you. Just to bring up a few items under my category, a note that I met with representatives from the Stockton-Parkerburg Turnpike. We're going to get two new historic markers, one along Main Street and one at Hebner Cemetery. Both of those are Civil War locations that are important. Troops marched down Main Street and went to Battle of Ridge Mountain, about 1861, July sometime.
You did a good job.
So, it's, yeah, they named the mountain after it. The other site is a location of the current city cemetery, was also the site of an early fort called Bush's Fort. So, both of those markers hopefully will be in place in a month or so. Remind residents that you need zoning building, electrical permits, raising permits, whether you're doing a fence, adding on, building a new structure. Asbestos removal ran into that issue past couple of weeks. You tear a building down, it has to be inspected for asbestos first, period. No questions asked. Those are state regulations, but we're required to enforce them. Council, I'll note that you've got a letter in your packet from Sherri Dean, support of the four-way stop signs on Main Street. It speeds up the school buses through the system, and some of them have actually started to use those intersections, the intersections with traffic lights because it can move through at a better rate. We've received approval of our CRS Class Eight rating from FEMA. Ambi, do you want to comment on that or not?
Well, we are going to retain our Class Eight rating, which is a 10% discount to residents that have flood insurance. We've been able to maintain that for six years, I think, now.
So, this is re-establishing or reapproval of that same rate for all folks in the area that have certain classes of the flood insurance. I attended, along with some other council members, the West Virginian Municipal League. There will be some changes to the way in which we handle bills, at least as far as the application posting. We don't quite have all those details yet, but that'll be forthcoming. And with that, I'll turn it over to City Attorney Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. Sam Ludlow is not the only supervisor that's having difficulty with the state of West Virginia. We have a number of participants on our utility boards, citizen members who are appointed by council, who have been paying into the state retirement system for as long as 34 years. And there was some recent umbrage taken by the state that all of a sudden, notwithstanding decades of collective service having been given to the city, that various of these utility board members are now to be taken off of the state retirement rolls. I have drafted on behalf of the four utility boards and the city council, a letter that has gone to Charleston to Tori G. Williams, who is the PERS Service Specialist there. And I'm not going to read the three-page letter, but I am going to pull a couple of snippets out just to give you a flavor as to our municipality's position on this. On page two, the middle paragraph, "Several of our current utility board members have paid into and been participants in our state retirement program for decades, the longest for 34 years." And then we proceed to talk about the commencement dates of service of these six individuals. "There's correspondence between the state retirement board and our city during the 1990s, pursuant to which the retirement board sought clarification from our city respecting the board members' participation in the fund. Any issues were then resolved, with several of the above-numbered participants having continued for the past 15 years or longer since that 1990s correspondence, to pay into the program. I suppose the state of West Virginia could declare that municipal board members, such as Buchanan's, cannot participate henceforth in our state retirement program. But as legal counsel for Buchanan, who has steadfastly, during my 30-year tenure, sought to avoid placing my city in precarious litigative positions, I shall be most concerned with my city's legal position and ability to defend a lawsuit filed by any disgruntled board members respecting any unilateral change in the law or policy interpretation, as would be retroactively applied. There has never been any question posed or concerns expressed by the state retirement board about Buchanan's board members participating in our state retirement program that failed to be answered or resolved in a manner favorable to permitting our board's members' participation. Our number of affected participants is small and finite. All of our board's members voluntarily participate in the state retirement program. A position seeking to remove these board members from participation in the program would seem to me to be not only fundamentally and egregiously unfair, but would place both the city and the state and my city in a prospective litigation position that could only be described as weak and capricious. We are awaiting further correspondence from the state about this." And I say "we," Ambi's our point of contact. They probably won't talk with me now. But we're hopeful that our position will prevail on this. But again, it's another one of those things that the state seems to sometimes fly by the seat of its pants when it comes to matters of that sort. So, enough of that. We made some additional revisions to the proposed lease with the National Guard folks. You have to understand that there's a lot of different players with this armory lease that we've been working on. Not only do we have to placate our bond counsel and the United States Department of Agriculture, who's going to loan us money, and they want to be sure that we have some interest in the real estate out there, but the armory folks also are curious to see what provisions are going to be in this lease agreement. And Mr. Doss, just in the last couple of days, has forwarded the most recently revised lease agreement back to Charleston for their review. So, we're dealing with state agencies, USDA, federal agency. We hope to have it back soon. Most of what I will take up with you will be with regard to ordinances 370 and 371. The Crossroads ordinance that Jerry Arnold mentioned to you at the last meeting is in its relative infancy. I need to meet with Jerry and get some other information in order to be able to further that out. The electrical ordinance is still on the shelf. It'll come along here soon. And Albert Ovle, with the TV Cable Board, contacted me over the weekend and thought that since we haven't had a meeting in a year or so, the TV Cable Board, that it would be timely to do that. And we are a year closer to the next seven-year franchise, five-year franchise, I'm sorry, with Suddenlink coming to a point of near expiration. So, it'd probably be in the cable company's interest to sit down and have some chats with us, too. Mr. Ovle's major concerns is revised, updated programming, some additional services that communities around us have that we have not been able to receive. So, you might look at your calendar, Mr. Clemmons, and see if we can get a meeting scheduled for sometime soon.
2018, I think.
Wow. A franchise with Suddenlink will expire before that, so you might want to strike. We always get good things when their franchise term is about to expire, so it might be a good time to have that meeting. That's all I have until we get to ordinances.
Okay. Under court documents, we have a request for food drive by the Voice Cap Pack 128. It's in your packet. Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We received a thank you note regarding our funding request for country roads transit. And Ambi has a recommendation regarding credit card surcharge by the city. Want to mention that? It's in your packet as well.
Yes, it's in the packet. I just wanted to let you know, back in May, when we first started taking credit cards, the council and the utility boards agreed to absorb the cost of the credit card fees. In early January, I was notified there's been a class action suit against Visa and MasterCard for interchange fees that was felt to have been charged in error too much. We have the ability to, in the class action suit, there was a settlement that gives us the ability to go back to the customer and charge us, surcharge to that customer for Visa, only for Visa brand and product cards. We can't charge it to prepaid and the debit. It wouldn't make any difference in the fees that we're paying, so I'm recommending we don't do it because I feel that we will probably have several mistakes because we have to post this at our door. We have to change our software to allow it to print on the receipt, the surcharge, and our clips will have to be aware of whether that person is swiping a prepaid or a product or brand, Visa or MasterCard. This doesn't pertain to discover. So, it's, I really wanted to make you aware of it. It doesn't change the fees, but there is a class action suit that we could participate in. I just feel that it would probably cost more in the long run from the mistakes that might happen from charging the wrong card, the wrong amount. But it, we will do whatever counts best, best to do.
Any questions on that? I think we really, I mean, we can wait a time period if you like, but Ambi's recommendation would be that we continue with our present practice and not get into the problem of adding a surcharge to it, which would greatly confuse the process of collecting credit card payments, which we get quite a few with the front counter, various activities. Other questions?
I think considering the total number that are actually debit cards and prepay's and everything, I agree with Ambi that I don't think it'd be worth the cost. And if it takes a motion to accept her recommendation, I so moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Second? Any further discussion?
I believe in the KISS principle, and I think we should keep it as simple as possible.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda. We have minutes of the regular meeting of February 7th. Not sure there are any building and wiring permits in this particular packet, but, and payment of the bills, plus you have documentation in your packet for bid opening for the gateway east that Junior talked about, and we already approved the 5K run. So, at least those first four items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. First reading, ordinance number 370, regulating bath salts.
Mr. Clemmons, you have before you the revised, reformatted ordinance 370. I don't think anything substantial of substance has been taken from what you had as a draft ordinance two weeks ago. I would tell you that the extra set of eyes that I received from Randy Levine, our municipal court judge, was helpful in eliminating some redundancies in there. Instead of using the phrases synthetic cannabinoids and substituted cathinoids, I think 57 times probably in the first ordinance, I think it's used like maybe twice now. So Randy was helpful in that. He said, "I don't want to have to look at an eight-page ordinance when I could just look at a six-page ordinance when I send people how unhappy with having to pay a fine." So I'm going to read this by caption. I'm not going to read all those whereas paragraphs again, they really didn't change. And then I want to point out just two or three things that I think are worthy of repetition from last meeting in the ordinance. So bear with me. Ordinance number 370 of the city of Buchanan. An ordinance one, prohibiting the sale, distribution, delivery, trading, bartering, giving away, exchanging, advertising for sale, display, marketing, producing, manufacturing, packaging, use or possessing for use, ingesting, inhaling, swallowing, snorting, smoking, injecting, or otherwise introducing into the human body any synthetic cannabinoid, substituted cannabinoid, methylene deoxy pyrovalerone, that's MDPV, or any other synthetic drug whose chemical composition is similar to those drugs marketed or packaged as those designer drugs commonly called bath salts or synthetic marijuana. Two, prohibiting the rental of real estate, buildings, or other structures to any person manufacturing, advertising for sale, selling, lending, renting, leasing, giving away, exchanging or otherwise distributing or possessing for sale any such prohibited substance. Three, fully endorsing and committing to the city's enforcement of the statutory provisions of chapter 47, article 19, section 1, et sec of the West Virginia Code, caption Drug Paraphernalia. Four, fully endorsing and committing to the city's enforcement of the statutory provisions of chapter 61, article 8, section 11 of the West Virginia Code, caption Breathing, inhaling, or drinking certain intoxicating compounds penalty. And, five, establishing penalties for persons violating the provisions of this ordinance. What follows are those whereas paragraphs, the various findings made by the White House, Congress, the state of West Virginia. I think the most important whereas paragraph that is worthy of our reiteration this evening is the last whereas. Whereas the council of the city of Buchanan hereby declares the sale, offering for sale, distribution, delivery, trading, bartering, giving away, exchanging, advertising for sale, display, marketing, production, manufacturing, packaging, use, or possession with intent to use, ingestion, inhalation, swallowing, snorting, smoking, injection, or other introduction into the human body of substituted cathinones, synthetic cannabinoids, methylene deoxy pyrovalerone, and other synthetic drugs more commonly known as bath salts or synthetic marijuana to be a danger to public health, safety, and welfare, and hereby establishes as unlawful all of said activities, now therefore be ordained. What follows are the same findings that I read to you last time as a draft ordinance. The definitions section, there was some redundancy there, a couple of terms, knowledge and merchant that really weren't necessary were removed. We've replaced some of the definitions for the major classifications of these drugs. The MDPV, substituted cathinones, and synthetic cannabinoids are more concise. The prohibited substances section is very important. This is new and it actually merged two articles into one. That's article three, very simply, this is the blood and guts, if you will, of this ordinance. It shall be unlawful for any person within the corporate limits of the city of Buchanan, Upshur County, West Virginia. Two, and I'm not going to read all that again, the sell, offer for sale, possess, the following. There are four categories of the so-called bath salt or synthetic marijuana drugs. Synthetic cannabinoids, substituted cathinones, methylene deoxy pyrovalerone, that's MDPV, or, and this is important, any other synthetic drug whose chemical composition is similar to any drug constituting one, two, or three of this article three, or generally marketed or packaged as those designer drugs commonly called bath salts. Article four pertains to landlords putting them on notice if they can't enter into leases with establishments that peddle this kind of thing. Article five, labeling. The fact that any prohibited substance, and all of these do, as included within article three hereof, is sold, distributed, delivered, traded, bartered, given away, exchanged, advertised for sale, displayed, marketed, packaged, or labeled as quote-unquote "not fit for human consumption," or words of similar effect, or identified as having some lawful use, shall not exempt a person from enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance. The penalties provision, this is a fine-only situation, it's an automatic $500 if you come before the municipal court. Section, article, or paragraph B under article six has to do with the forfeiture. Any items which may be seized or forfeited pursuant to statutes or guidelines of the state of West Virginia may be forfeited in the same manner as described therein for a violation of this section. The penalties prescribed herein shall not in any manner be deemed to preclude the filing of additional charges by state and/or federal authorities for violations of state and/or federal laws. And then D, I think is an important thing, too. We're not going after Walmart for selling legitimate potpourri or the little Joke's plant spikes that you can put in your plants that are plant fertilizer. That's not what this ordinance is about. The penalty provisions hereof shall not be deemed to apply and are not intended to apply to any person selling or otherwise distributing legitimate products whose real use and intended purpose are as, potpourri, incense, bathing products, Calgon, take me away, right, plant food, insect repellent, fertilizer products, et cetera. In addition to all of that other stuff, the mean old city administrator under article seven can immediately revoke the municipal license upon any conviction. Article eight restates our city's commitment to enforcing the Drug Paraphernalia Act. I'm happy to report that delegate Hamilton has already introduced a bill to the legislature to repeal the 32-year-old West Virginia Drug Paraphernalia Act. So that's a good thing. But until then, we're going to stick by it. And then article nine, the city's commitment to fully enforce the provisions of chapter 61, article 8, section 11 of the West Virginia Code, which has to do with the breathing, inhaling, or drinking of any compound. And you've got about 12 lines worth of things that are specifically set forth in the code that people aren't allowed to inhale, which my reading of this would include these bath salt substances. Article 10 and 11 remains the same if you approve this.
Pass on first reading this evening, ordinance number 370 of the city of Buchanan on this prohibition of sale and use of synthetic cannabinoids and all that other stuff that they've been doing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I want to thank Matt Gregory, too, who reviewed the ordinance. And I was supposed to give props to our erstwhile city administrator at the last meeting. He reminded me, he said, "You know, this was my idea." So Mr. Doss is going to take a bow now. It's been a collective effort, we've all worked long and hard on pulling this together. There are some other municipal ordinances floating around out there, but none of them that I've seen, at least in West Virginia, are as comprehensive as this one is. This is a pretty solid effort. Okay, not to toot our own collective horns, but every once in a while we get something right. This next thing that we're going to take up is a response to the couple of meetings worth of attendees in recent months that have urged the council to address outdoor smoking. We know that most things indoor smoking are banned except in private residence in Upshur County. This would take it to the next level on the outside. I didn't pretend to have all the answers with this. I had two or three form ordinances that different folks had offered up. Joyce Harris Thacker with FRN, again, had a half-baked city of Clarksburg ordinance. God, I hate their ordinances. And I started with that as our threshold piece, and I very soon got into it, and I just started pulling my hair out, what's left of it. And then Mr. Clemmons came to the rescue, and he came across a Marshall County ordinance, which, there's a lot of Marshall County stuff in here. My wife would be happy with that, she's a native of Marshall County where they do everything 100% correctly. So let me just go through this thing. I think the wherashes, some of them are more important than others, I want to point those out. This is not a first reading, this is just something for everybody to look at for at least the next couple of weeks, but I would like you to try to weigh in to see if we want to have Mr. Clemmons put it on his agenda for the March 7 meeting as a possible first reading. It's not imperative that we do so, but the sooner you put this into effect, that's a good thing. This is ordinance number, would be, ordinance number 371 of the city of Buchanan. An ordinance one, prohibiting smoking and the use of all other tobacco products in all city-owned parks and recreational facilities. And two, establishing penalties for persons violating the provisions of this ordinance. Whereas the United States Surgeon General and other authoritative public health authorities have determined that involuntary inhalation of tobacco smoke, one, is a cause of numerous diseases in healthy non-smokers; two, is a major contributor to air pollution; three, places children, unborn children of pregnant women, elderly people, and individuals with cardiovascular and/or respiratory disease at special risk; four, is a trigger for acute episodes of respiratory distress and myocardial infarction; five, increases the lifetime exposure to carcinogenic tobacco smoke of both smokers and non-smokers; six, burdens the health care system by increasing the number and frequency of required hospital admissions and emergency visits, thereby increasing the public and private expenditures required for the treatment; seven, reduces the life expectancy of persons consistently exposed to secondary smoke; and eight, causes substantial losses in productivity through smoking-related absences from work and school. And, whereas the council of the city of Buchanan believes that smoking and the use of other tobacco products occurring in the proximity of children and adults participating in or attending outdoor activities as spectators at city-owned parks and other recreational facilities is harmful to participant and spectator health and is often offensive to those persons using such facilities. And, whereas the city of Buchanan is authorized to create and sustain a tobacco-free environment through adoption of a no-smoking and tobacco-free policy within all parks and other outdoor recreational facilities owned by the city. And, whereas the city of Buchanan believes parents, leaders, and officials involved in recreation are role models for youth and should have a positive effect on the lifestyle choices they make. And, whereas the tobacco industry often advertises that and/or sponsors recreational events to foster a connection between tobacco use and recreation. And, whereas cigarettes and other tobacco products, once consumed in public places, are often discarded on the ground resulting in, one, additional maintenance expenses; two, diminution of the attractiveness of the city's parks and other recreational facilities; and, three, risks posed to young children due to ingestion of the discarded products. And, and then there's a litany of about a half a dozen sections that are drawn right out of the West Virginia Code that has to do with the city's power to basically protect the public from unwholesome substances and activities. And then I'm going to jump down to the last whereas paragraph. Whereas the council of the city of Buchanan has determined that the prohibition of tobacco use at the city's parks and recreational facilities serves to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Buchanan, now therefore being ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Buchanan, as follows. There are five specific findings. The council is authorized to protect the public health and welfare by prohibiting smoking and the use of other tobacco products, sometimes referred to as smokeless tobacco, in certain public places. B, when the need to breathe smoke-free air conflicts with the desire to smoke, the need to breathe smoke-free air shall have priority. C, it is a proper function of municipal government to promote smoking cessation by active smokers. D, it is a proper function of municipal government to discourage non-smokers from taking up any tobacco use habit and from developing a nicotine addiction. And E, the adoption of a comprehensive ordinance designed to eliminate smoking and the use of other tobacco products in city parks and other recreational facilities will greatly aid the protection of the citizenry and promote the public moral, safety, health, welfare, and good order of our Buchanan community. There are two definitions within article two, smokeless tobacco and smoking. Someone did ask me in the last couple of weeks, "Well, that wouldn't include those electronic cigarettes, would it?" Those things do in fact put out vapors that could be objectionable, and the boilerplate ordinances out there have taken that into consideration. I've stuck that in, that smoking also includes the use of an electronic cigarette which creates a vapor in any form or manner. So that's something for you to cogitate on in the next couple of weeks. The prohibited activities. Smoking and the use of all other tobacco products shall be prohibited in the following outdoor public places within the corporate limits of the city of Buchanan, Upshur County, West Virginia. One, all municipally-owned or operated parks and outdoor recreational facilities, including but not limited to the Poundstone Memorial River Trail, Jawbone Park, the City Park on Park Street, and the North Buchanan Park. Two, upon the grounds of the city's Stockard Youth Center. Three, upon the grounds of the city's Gibson Memorial Library. And four, all areas where fairs and festivals are conducted, including but not limited to the annual West Virginia Strawberry Festival and Festival Fridays at Jawbone Park. Penalties. Any person found guilty before the municipal court of the city of Buchanan of violating any provision of this ordinance. This is a progressive kind of penalty thing, as you have seen in some of the other ordinances. Incidentally, this is labeled article six, it should be article four, so there's a typo there. $50 for the first offense within a 24-month period. $100 for a second offense within a 24-month period. $200 for a third offense, and boy, if you're dumb enough to continue to do it, it just keeps going up. $400, $500 for fourth, fifth, and subsequent offenses. The severability provision is article five is our standard. Article six, the effective date. If you take this up on first reading at the March 7 meeting, the second reading would be on March 21, 30 days thereafter, would effectuate this ordinance on April 20, 2013. So some homework for everybody to look at that. There are a lot of other, more far-reaching ordinances that are out there. The Marshall County ordinance, for example, gets into parking lots, not only municipally-owned parking lots, but they go a certain distance of any of these facilities, 15 feet for certain things, 25 feet for certain things. You can't smoke within a certain radius of a hospital or any healthcare facility, whether it's a public or private property. One article that I toyed with sticking in there, and I think Jerry Arnold might have hit me, was the signage facet. I think that as a practical matter, the due process clause of our constitution probably requires us to create some signs for these places that we would specifically be banning smoking altogether. And not just smoking, but all tobacco products. So we need to carefully craft those signs. The city will have some expense in realizing the production of those things, but I can't imagine it would be more than a few hundred dollars to do the job. As you think about this, it's kind of, you know, for 30 years I've been teaching courses up at Westland and a few management courses here and there, there's this thing called Maslow's hierarchy, or Maslow's needs hierarchy. And the further you go up the ladder on the needs thing, you take care of the basic stuff like shelter and food and having something to drink and air to breathe and all that stuff. I think this city is advancing up the Maslow's hierarchy. The last several ordinances that I've done that aren't utility-related have to do with such things as removing abandoned cars, the noise ordinance that was passed. such things as removing abandoned cars, the noise ordinance that was passed, the registry for abandoned, rundown, dilapidated properties, the bath salts ordinance that you approved on first reading tonight. Now this ordinance that you're considering, that's where you really get into quality-of-life things. It's always great to build a building or do something with our utilities, but these other things can have a lot of impact upon the overall welfare of our community. I hope you will consider this very seriously.
I'm asking for a motion this evening. This is merely a draft. Are there any questions for David or comments?
I have a question about the electronic cigarettes creating a vapor. Does anyone know what that vapor is?
I do not.
Is it basically water?
I think probably the reason that that's in this boilerplate ordinance is if somebody calls the secret hotline and the police show up to cite someone, you're having these unnecessary calls and the guy says, "Uh, psych, it's not a real cigarette." Whereas if you just ban it altogether, then you don't get into those situations. I mean, I'm assuming that that's the reason that the ban on those is in there as well.
I might be a little hesitant to ban something that could be construed as helping someone to quit smoking, which I understand those electronic cigarettes, that is their purpose. So I might take into consideration that part about the electronic cigarettes.
Except that you're not banning them from using, you're just banning them from certain areas, parts.
Areas, yeah. I still may not be in favor of that.
Any other comments?
Another area, okay, that you might consider, think about is the public safety complex area because of being right next to Stocker Youth Center.
But, well, I didn't put municipal parking lots in there either. I mean, there's a lot of other, and I didn't put in the water plant or the sanitary sewer plant or the waste garage or the city street garage.
But those are areas that people frequent. You've got a lot, you know, desiccious, the children, you know? And a lot of people go there and park, whatever. So if they're smoking, they'll all gather there to smoke if they can't do it in Jawbone.
If this city council wants to universally ban smoking on all city-owned property, wheresoever it is situated, you have the power to do that. That's not what this ordinance accomplishes and that's not what the lobbyists were seeking. But this could become way bigger than what it is. I don't know that I'm prepared to advocate that tonight or to-
Well, I'm just saying that's something to think about.
Something to think about, absolutely.
Because I know once Jawbone's busy with the farmer's market and all that, they're going to be banned from that area. They're going to walk across the street and that's where they're going to be done at.
As an ex-smoker, I'm very much in favor of this, like my distinguished colleague. 1978 was my last cigarette and all those kinds of things. And I think we should go through with this, but my one concern, we've touched on briefly here tonight, as an emergency responder at the fire department and intimately familiar with the 911 center, and when 911 gets a call, "What's your emergency, ma'am? Somebody's smoking at Jawbone Park." The last thing I want to have is 2013 report with smoking. Honest to goodness, our officers have got more than enough to take care of without answering calls for smoking. Have no problem putting the signage up, but it's got to be people, you've got to be courteous and respectful. The last thing I want is guys taken off of street patrol and other patrols answering smoking calls. And there's no good way around it. 911's going to get the calls. That's my big deal, is the littering part of it. No, we've got littering ordinances that'll take care of the mess that cigarettes have. But I don't know. I will both in favor of this, but it's with a caveat that, boy, it could be a burden for our police officers and that's the last thing I want to have.
It could be, but there are already laws concerning smoking by minors and everything, too, that I don't know whether those are enforced or not. But I would like to see some of our city officers at some time stop these kids that look like they're 13, 14 years old and say, "Where did you get that cigarette?" And find them, find their parents, whatever it takes. That's just my, you know, as a reformed smoker.
We're our own responsibility.
We are, we are. The other thing I wanted to hear, when it said not limited to the annual West Virginia Strawberry Festival, all areas where fairs and festivals are conducted, well, that includes the whole downtown area of Buchanan, all the streets and alleys and everything during the strawberry festival.
That's my tendency.
Okay.
If we need to elaborate that.
It's in the report?
13, 2012.
Okay. Thank you. Now make it 46.
Is that going up?
I'm trying to that one, yeah.
I think we'll have to spend a lot of the time about the communication and signage and things like that. Hopefully that can help, those kind of things can help address some of Scott's issues. I don't think it ought to be, it's a culture change.
I don't think anybody on council, or maybe Mr. Dos, he's always looking for an extra dime for the city coffers, right? I don't think anybody with the city is seeing this as a revenue generating.
Oh, heavens, no.
It's, you know, we're doing this for healthier.
It's the right thing to do.
And there's a libertarian position to be taken out there, that this is just another thing that government is taking from us to do. And I'm aware of that position. But when you're talking about the impact on people with compromised respiratory systems and little children and the whole bit, I think you err on the side of good health for those folks.
As some of you other people here have seen, I have seen people with cancer of the jaw because they chewed or rubbed or whatever you want to call it. And I've seen them lose a portion of their face and I've seen them die from doing it. And even with those terrible pictures showing some of my relatives, they continue to do that. So I think anything we can do to help preserve the quality of life for the people of Buchanan and Upshur County, I think we should do. That's our purpose here, not just to do water lines and stuff like that. But our purpose is to take care of our citizens the best that we can.
Any additional comments? Brings us to council comments. Scott?
I want to pick up Sam's torch over there, a little bit about the frustration he has with getting comments back from the state for reports that have been going on and this permit issue has been in progress for the rest of the year, give or take, something like that, Sam. You know, if we took recordings of this meeting and our other meetings and the sanitary meetings, verbatim and send them to the leadership of this state, they would be appalled at the lack of response of state agencies to us. To me, the state environmental, Department of Environmental Protection ought to be doing everything in their power to help us meet the requirements as opposed to seemingly putting walls up. And the answer is, what if we have to do that and in towns like Buchanan where I'd spend a million dollars, a million and a half dollars to comply with that, it's going to put small municipalities out of business? All the services that we would want to put to the citizens go to put up some wall that may or may not be necessary. We're going to do everything in our power to absolutely make sure the effluent that we have going out meets criteria. But at the same time, it ought to be done so it doesn't cripple communities like Buchanan. And I've got to think that if we taped and set records and all that to the leadership of our state, our state government ought to be helping municipalities instead of making it an onerous process just to stay in business. So Sam, I share your frustration. And if we ever do send recordings to the esteemed governor and his merry munchkins in Brown and Charles Town, maybe they will get the message that they need to be more responsive and cooperative to city needs.
Tell us how you really feel.
Yeah, I tell you, it's so frustrating.
Ron?
One thing I'd like to say is that I'm terribly, terribly happy that the mom and pop's hippie shop is closed down across the street on La Croye. I'd like to thank the youth and the adults that appeared at city council and in support of that. Again, the citizens in support coming and telling us what they would like to do, that's one of the most important things that you can do. And I thank the citizens for their efforts in this and it's worked out well. Thank you.
Dave?
Me?
You?
Okay. I agree with what Scott said and I just would add, I think we need term limits in our country and we need some common sense.
Amen.
Pam?
This week, the unclaimed property paper came out in the paper this week. That is just a small portion of people in Buchanan that have unclaimed properties. I learned over the weekend that there's over 2,000 people in Buchanan that have unclaimed properties and that's over, way over a million dollars' worth of unclaimed properties. So you might want to call and find out if you are listed because like the man told us, there's just a few people it's even listed in the paper.
John?
Just thanks to the students that hung with us tonight. It's, they're not always this long, I promise. Good job, Cass.
I would like to echo Pam's comment and I will add, haven't yet, but I will add link to that on the city's webpage. It's in the flyer, you can find it that way. You can just go on the web and look for unclaimed properties in the state of West Virginia. You'll find the address. Pretty easy to put your name out and it reports right back to you whether you have any unclaimed property or not.
City of Buchanan actually has unclaimed property. We filed to obtain that, so we'll be updating you as we get that.
Do we have a reason to have a executive session?
I don't believe so. Unless Mr. Dos knows something that I've done, I don't believe that-
I haven't heard of it.
-any new developments in that matter.
Talk about the new chairs if you want to.
We can talk about term limits, too. If there's no further comments, entertain a motion for adjournment. So move second.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.